Hi, Anne.
Yeah, okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I don't need to say anything, I just want to know that I'm home or not.
She gave, we gave the.
Do you need another peanut butter?
No, ma'am. I'm saving it for us.
I would say give it to the chair.
The chair?
Yeah.
Which chair?
I'll hang it over here.
I'll take it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have you guys seen your service road back there?
Hmm?
So that service road back there comes out the back door.
I drove out of it the other day because I wouldn't have made it through the meeting.
Did you see the bomb craters in it?
Well, I knew it was, I went very careful.
Bad.
Right.
Really bad.
I was back there looking at the.
Is that irrigation running on that landscaping deal right there? Get run off, that wall down there, that wall's supposed to sound like, we've got a whole.
I'm so.
Putting a half beat down.
I'm so.
It's a one-off.
Yeah, who's your bomb floor?
We fixed it the last time.
But it doesn't matter, but again, it's gotten to the point where it's ridiculous and bad. Ridiculous and bad. The dump trucks are even.
That didn't land off, yeah.
I have a question for you. And I don't understand this. We have the city of Fort Myers annexed back part of Pelican Preserve. So the city of Fort Myers is taxing all that, the budget by the city. Gateway is collecting in Lee County. They're permitted, the city requires permits.
Yeah, the.
Does Lee County, the city doesn't have a permit, require permits?
It wasn't self-contained.
What's this gateway view? They were probably.
We heard anything about one of them.
Shouldn't require permits.
I know they have not, and the only thing I did hear is that it could come with a shores of notice two weeks. Was it Lee County? No.
Well, it's in Lee County.
It was disaster. I don't know how Lee County.
Lee County Gateway is going to be worse. Griffin's just going to be.
Lee County is, so the city.
I don't know.
Which means, but if it's your.
It was a real ugly, although I know there's going to be eight hundred, nine hundred homes coming down that road.
The city said, hey, we're in George.
Wouldn't have gone.
They cannot inspect all its houses. They're on our side.
Where's the sewer?
Now, the water in the sewer.
Now, the sewer.
Not the sewer.
The sewer.
Water, sewer, water.
Yeah.
But do you do the.
Affect.
File people on that?
Yeah.
The city.
On the house.
Do you see.
I think it.
Back to.
Yeah.
So they have to get some rid of these new folks. Who does this?
And I find out, I'll find out.
It's very cloudy.
It starts getting cloudy.
I'm learning this.
As far as inspections.
So you must have got.
Okay.
As far as our.
Okay, so you do the inspections. They pull permits from you to do that?
They do.
So you do the.
You submit the information at the point. Yeah, this is the city of Fort Myers attached tech is the one that did. They handle. They sign off, when we do the inspections, they're the ones who follow up with them. They do the inspections.
So these houses that are having a sidewalk right now, your, your crew would inspect to make sure that.
Yes, well, they did their fire hydrant job there.
Okay, okay. And the, the border meters.
Yes. And that's, and they, they break water lines twice a week.
Oh, I.
At a minimum.
Well, I know the guy.
Or they.
Construction.
Yeah. What happens is when they, when they're, when they're working on a lot, usually two or three lots next to it, the dump trucks will come in and they'll, and they'll, and they'll do a circle. Now, when they put the big yellow boxes, the water meter up there, I'll go as well.
Let's try and show back on the.
See, I'll be out there. We'll, we'll be.
And I know that this lady, we need to allow her to speak. No, I don't, I'm just a homeowner for the next, I don't want.
Slidewalk levels to be two percent.
If you have any questions, I'm here.
And I said, I don't understand why two percent is, I worked.
You mean to find Mr. Banks, please?
Actually, we said seven feet on the curb, and it's two percent of the seven feet, and we use a foot as in hundreds, not twelves. I said, oh my god.
Oh, if I had a dollar. Yeah.
How many states and territories are you something? How many states and territories are you?
Yeah.
On your.
I'll show you.
I'll let you start. Thank you, Mr. Banks. Okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. And I'm going to do four A, I know we haven't done staff reports yet, but we do have a resident here and to be kind to her, then we'll go to four A.
Is this the extension?
Yes.
The only, the only thing I had on that is I saw a, what I think is a typo, staff recommendation approval request for existing encroachment of four feet, two inches, and four six, and deny the additional encroachment of three inches. I think that's three feet.
Three feet, yeah, for plants. I don't think you can get any plants in three inches.
And the other one on that is that, like, I really don't care as long as they put in those beds, because our community has a requirement that you have to put a landscape bed around the, the pool in the lanai. So I don't have a problem with them doing that with the understanding that if we have to come in and do late management, you repair it when we carry it up to do the work. So I could go halfway with it.
Yeah, and I'm at point with regards to the standard form of encroachment, which isn't here, we have a standard form of agreement and an initial draft, and I've made some corrections just to technically make it correct. The board has, the district has the ability, it will try to avoid the improvements, but if they can't avoid the improvements, they can take the improvements out, and the property owner holds the district's warrants for that activity.
And that's exactly where I was headed on the, uh, the landscape.
Landscape.
Yeah, it says, only the district in its sole judgment is not able to work around the encroachment or district mandate that the improvements and encroachments be moved or removed. Uh, and then, and, and if they don't remove it, district.
Because, because a landscape bed around pools, I know at least in our community, that's mandated on the designer too.
And if there's an emergency, we can just do it without.
Go back. So I would, I would move to approve this.
Yes, this one.
I would move to approve it, as recommended with staff, with the exception that the three-foot landscape bed be permitted with the understanding that any necessary encroachment will be at the owner's risk or risk and expense.
And part of that, Mr. Tinkler, I assume would be authorize the chair to sign a non-disturbance encroachment agreement with Nicola Barrett. Yeah.
And it'll, and you're okay with that language, if for some reason to do late maintenance, that plants were destroyed, that you would have to replace them, you couldn't come back to us and say, you owe me some plants.
Yeah, and right now, I noticed a copy is not in the agenda packet, the form agreement that we utilize requires a thousand dollar deposit for the district to be held in case the person does not pay for the cost of Mr. Encour's, if they have to go in there and remove.
I'd wait that.
I'd wait that. I don't want to make mention, because on an ad hoc, just for the record also, the board on an ad hoc basis has to determine decision, discretion, to not have that in there, or they can't, so you're not locked in for any future encroachment agreement. Yeah, if there's a future encroachment agreement, you could include it.
That's my motion, and the, the add-on of the, uh, waiving the thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Sorry you had to wait.
No, it's all this.
Mike, I'll make a change.
Three hours of pain.
Mike, what I'll do is I'll make a change, is email it to you, follow the corrections, we're exempt for the three feet.
Okay, I'm going to pop us back up to District Manager and Utility Manager staff reports.
And Chris, Chris basically said he held his off.
Till the next.
Till the next meeting to discuss those, so.
Kenny, that puts you on the hot seat.
Kenny Hall, Utility Manager, can you give me this, what, September Utility Manager's report? I just want to say this September was the busiest month we probably ever had since I've been here.
Especially in Stony Brook?
Especially in Stony Brook, even with the hurricane and what we did, this last month was a doozy. Uh, I'm going to start out with the Stony Brook. Um, we had an eight-inch line hit along Gemstone Drive. Uh, they hit an eight-inch water main at approximately 5:30 PM. Who got it? Comcast contractors.
Again?
Yes, they hit another line.
It's steady.
Comes in threes.
It's steady.
Yes, and it was a major, major hit.
Where are the stones in the next three pounds?
We're not exactly, the exact details of what they did and what the thinking was that led up to that, I don't know. Uh, we did have to cut the sidewalk, it completely undermined the street, we had to put almost twelve tons of backfill back into the street, level it out, let it settle, and then repave it. Uh, that was a major repair that happened after hours. Uh, we just, everybody had already gone home when we got that call.
To building Comcast for this, I trust?
Uh, we made it, we made it back within twenty, twenty-five minutes is the estimate. By the time our fir, our guy on call got back into the district and got on-site to actually turn the line off, uh, very, very, that was not a good scenario.
I'd like some, I'd like some additional on-demand credits. Comcast, I think that's worth it.
Kind of spot it.
And then we had a reoccurring problem along Harborstone Loop, which is the one I showed you. We had a problem that the front yard kept getting undermined, kept being undermined, we kept putting dirt, filled dirt back into it. We didn't want, it got undermined again, so we decided we were going to have to open the ground up and see what's going on. Uh, what we found was not very good. Uh, we had, at one point, that the, the line connecting into our sanitary sewer was repaired with a firm coat, and it completely collapsed. How long and when this happened, we don't know. Uh, the way we found it is we went into the sewer cleanup with our camera, we hit complete one-hundred percent obstruction. Once we did that, we knew we were going down to find out what was going on. Uh, and it, as we, especially in Stony Brook, because what happened in the no-name storm and the, and Irma, when that water floods, the sanitary sewer becomes hydrologically overloaded, and this is where it's coming in. Um, so as we go through Stony Brook, and then in Rafterstone, McCanton Park, we're going to run into this problem again and again and again. That is going to be a reoccurring problem as we hit fifteen, and then as we go into the twenty-year mark on this community. Uh, we've repaired six to date sewer cleanouts in Stony Brook. Uh, we have just, we have not even really started, we're going to start at the beginning of, not next week, the week after, and we will go through house by house and clean out by clean out, just like we do with our utility sweeps, but we're expecting more of the same of that.
Hey, can you ever say? There's, uh, one new construction in Stony Brook, and the amount of overrun, uh, sand runoff that, uh, that I've noticed, because it's down the street from me, um, I'm sure would be, uh, you know, somewhat of a concern with, with the existing issues. Um, if you get a chance to swing by, you know, it's.
Yeah.
And it's just pouring out now, and I don't know if it has to do with the grade or just the amount of sand and debris and, and, you know, that's there. I don't, if you don't think it's concerned, fine, I just thought I would just bring it up.
And then I wanted to touch on, uh, what happened with the Gateway Greens and our fire hydrant program. Uh, the Gateway Greens repairs, uh, brought, uh, the, what we were going to consider the end of the two thousand eighteen fire hydrant program, uh, this brought it to a screeching halt. What basically happened was we set up two crews for, to do repairs on hydrants that were needed in Gateway Greens along West Links, um, and in the Championship Greens community. Uh, we had tested the valves, we cleared all the valves, and we'd be getting, to be getting the proper turns prior to us staging this operation. Uh, what we didn't know was that, were we getting complete closure, were we going to be able to isolate it to get to these hydrants to do the repairs? What we found out is, no, we are not. Uh, we got complete isolation on Championship Greens, ha, it was done in phases, I imagine. Uh, the last two phases, we were able to isolate, no problem, valves worked. On the original part, the, uh, the valve completely inoperative, we were not able to isolate, and as we started backing up, we just kept running into the same problem. The valves were not isolating. We know this because we had data loggers stationed where we were going to isolate, where we could watch the pressure real-time. So I staged myself where I was in the middle, and I could just watch the pressure, and as they valved off, the pressure would drop off along Gateway Greens, that never happened. And we believe the culprit was in Fairway Isles and at the crossover into the back of Hampton Park. Uh, we closed that valve, and then as we closed each valve along the line, we would open up fire hydrants along that way, which should have been isolated. House valves, we never achieved any type of isolation. It got to quarter to one, uh, and I just called it off, it was no longer feasible for us to keep going like we were going. Uh, we anticipated, uh, most likely having a valve off Hampton Greens before we found complete isolation. Once we got to Hampton Greens and it did not isolate, that was it, I just called it off, as this is about as far as we're ready to go. Another thing is that they were all unrestrained fire hydrants. The contractors, at about quarter after midnight, had exposed it, because they were going to go right in and do the repair, try to do it as fast as they can, and what they found obviously scared them. They were not prepared for what they found. So when we go back in, uh, when we come up with a new plan, and we were able to achieve isolation, they were recommending that we do not do this at night. It is not feasible, they were not happy, they were guiding, and these are twenty and thirty-year guides with experience, and this is what they do. Uh, and they were, they, one of the biggest things that they came with is that we do not want to do this at night. This is very old, thirty-plus, twenty-five years, unrestrained fire hydrants. If we get into any kind of problem with a water main or any kind of leakage at two o'clock in the morning, we're going to be in serious trouble, and we can't prepare for what could possibly go wrong, we, we don't, we don't know. And what they were, they didn't want to find out at two o'clock in the morning, what are we going to do? Uh, so on that end, uh, what we were going to do is starting to take solicit bids for inline valves and find our crucial spots, especially along the West Links line, because to repair those fire hydrants, uh, we are just in the, in the solicitation and getting contractors to come in and bid to do, uh, inline valves with no stoppage. Even though if we do get inline valves and put them in, we're still going to have to shut down and fix those fire hydrants. Uh, that was about, uh, as far as I would take that one. Uh, the Griffin Drive lift station that we.
Kenny, one second. Uh, what's your, what's your timeline for, uh, the fixing those issues in, in Gateway Greens?
It depends on when the contractors can give us, give us a decent bid. Uh, just to get the inline guys in, if, if they can come in and do the cutting in of the valve with no stoppage of service, uh, is six to eight weeks. They're very busy. This is a very common thing.
So this is probably going to be about a three month.
It's going to be until we can get what we need done, uh, in the scope of it.
Okay.
We'll come back.
Excuse me? You talking about the hot tab?
Yes, without, without shutting down, uh, no, no, no stoppage of service, they can do it.
But what's important, because I just had, I had a resident ask, every issue that you, because I just want to fill the record, every issue that you are finding, we are resolving.
Yes, we are working to resolve.
It may take a little bit of time, dude.
Or, or we're going to talk about later.
The Griffin Drive lift station, uh, at the seven-eleven, uh, has been completed, I want to say one-hundred percent completed. Uh, what happened was when they cut the piping into this, this station into the wet well, when they set the concrete and put the line over it, they missed a, a spot. Uh, and they were going to have to, they were due to come today or tomorrow, and I told them that I was not going to do accept, uh, the lift station, so it was one-hundred percent.
Does that mean miss a spot?
Miss a spot.
They missed a spot, I mean, when they took the duct tile line out, and we replaced it with HDP, and they sealed it back up, on the inside part, when they did the ceiling, they, they missed a spot. They didn't, there was a whole swath that we caught that, that was not ravened. So we pointed that out.
Because the pipe didn't protrude into the wet well?
No, not, not when they're doing the ravening. When they put it in, I guess it cut around the side, or there was a whole strip there that was not ravened. And we, yeah, and it, the, the pumps have been dropped, and it is one-hundred percent done, it's just that we have to get that one spot before I can set the station one-hundred percent. Uh, they assured me that it will be done, completed tomorrow, uh, and that's where we're at on that one. And then lastly, with the irrigation, uh, there again, we're still tracking our, our communities that were moving over, uh, to the alternate days, and we're still moving along that, and we have completely removed our, the district's irrigation times on Saturday, which is a big move. That is, that is the highest demand day, we've removed all the district irrigation from Saturday as kind of phase one. We're going to move them off of all the other watering days and get them onto the days that are no demand for residents, which is a big, which is a good task.
Question mark.
Good.
The South Florida Water Management District permit references, and I have no basis to believe this one way or the other, that we have nine hundred and I believe ninety acres of common area. Has anybody ever validated that? I find that unbelievable. Because that has a big thing to do with all of our water usage. If we've got nine hundred and ninety acres, that's the equivalent of six Gateway Greens caucuses. I can't believe we've got that much common area for landscaping, irrigation needs. Somebody needs to be, whether we take a perimeter, get off of a, a LEPA map or whatever, we need to take and do some checks to verify that that number is right. Uh, that, that is a godly amount of land, uh, that we're doing now. If that's inclusive of the FDLEsman or the parks that, uh, that we have, the soccer field, there you could pick up two hundred acres real quick, but we don't water the FDLEsman yet. But that nine ninety needs to be really looked at.
And Kenny, I have a question for you, and that is on the Stony Brook's, who are cleanouts, and I assume that you're going to be doing all throughout the community. Are you using the new piece of equipment to camera those to make sure that they, that's how you're deciding if they need or they just wanted to clarify?
Yes, and we say that with that one, once we hit, we didn't even get to the bend, and we got one-hundred percent blocked, so we could not see anything, that's what it would come across. So we find sand is another real, once you see sand, you know, you got to break in there somewhere.
You guys having fun with that new tool?
It does add a lot of options, and it's, and it's a great tool, a lot of options that we, that we.
Ignorance is bliss.
Kenny, any other questions for Kenny?
Ignorance is bliss. You can't see, you don't know.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks, man.
And then, my, finance name.
I didn't, she just had me on there.
Even though you have two hats on tonight.
Yeah, no, she just had me on there, I don't have anything.
Okay. All right, then, that moves us to approved expenditure for GIS services in Pelican Reserve, that's four C, as in cat.
So move.
Ten.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was easy. Four D, as in dog, roadway under control of debunked POAs, this was where you were wanting the header earlier in.
Yeah, I think, uh, real, just real quick, like, I've made all the calls I can make, I've chased it as far as I can go, and I've narrowed it down to the three properties or the three, uh, POAs that are involved. Vince Sardo's Town Lakes Office Park is simple, Vince lives here in Gateway, we could get him to sign off on a quick claim real quick. Uh, he'd be more than happy to get rid of that assessment that he's being, I think, wrongly billed. Uh, Fair Lakes, Fairway Lakes Office Park is a guy named Brian DeBorsneck, he works with Solara Holdings, I believe, here in Fort Myers, but I couldn't chase him down. Then the last two, uh, with, uh, Worthington Commerce Office Park, are two gentlemen in Jacksonville with addresses of One Independence Drive, tenth floor Jacksonville, Paul Brignett Jr., and Ian McCowen, M.C.K.E.O.W.N. Uh, I talked to the third officer who excused himself and got out, named Sergio Perez over on the East Coast, and, uh, he, he was very familiar with the issue. He said those are the only other two officers that were in there, and that's, I believe, what Tony has found. My thing to get this thing going is authorize our attorney to send out letters on behalf of the CDD, uh, indicating that we would like the officers to sign off on a quick claim deed and all the other legal jargon that would have to be in there to get this buttoned up and get this thing resolved. We have accepted, uh, West Links Business Park for WCI, and those people are getting for free what Town Lakes is paying for, this just isn't right.
So with West Lake, do we cover that one-hundred percent?
I'm sorry. Yeah, we would take over, they would quick claim deed to us, basically the same thing WCI did on West Links Drive and Commonwealth Drive. We would get the entire right-of-way, we get the streetlights, street signs, the whole home line yards.
And we don't special system back? We basically just absorb it into our operating costs?
We should.
And then the community would have to.
Here's, here's my opinion on that. If I would have been here on Town Lakes, I would have argued, Town Lakes Drive, Fairway Lakes Drive, Commerce Lakes Drive, West Links, Commonwealth are all drives accessible to everybody in this community, because they use them to access various businesses. They are as, uh, what do you call it, uh, public as you can get, far more public than the one going back to the flood park, but we took it over. So my thing is, take these things over again, done, but as Tony indicated, and Chris Shield from, uh, Pibbys Law Firm, uh, gave to, advice to the Daniels Preserve people, what we have suggested, and Tony has indicated, is the best route to go, get these officers to sign off and get it going. But I think somebody, we need to have something come out of here as an official document, and I think if it comes from Tony, uh, the, the two guys I'm trying to chase in Jacksonville, uh, maybe they'll take, take notice of it.
Well, I mean, as part of it, if boards inclined to act, uh, give that direction, I would suggest that the, uh, the one through six of each of these roads, you know, the recommended course of conduct, be the one, prepare the title report first, make sure it's still listed, make sure there's nothing else funny out there. The quick claim deed gives you what they have, and then go through that process, and I can also use a research tool to try to find out current real addresses of those over there.
I just do, well, I research tool it all, that's all I can, but the issue, the issue is, we've got to get this resolved, because in my opinion, we are wrongly assessing Town Lakes Office Park.
Why, um, what kind of shape are these roads in? Or is this something that as soon as we get a quick claim deed to us, people are going to be saying, you need to repave my road?
You had to bring that up.
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did. Uh, complicated. Uh, West Links and the others, the WCI did, as you know, they brought them up to speed, put in all the signs and this, that, and the other. The, uh, ones that we're talking about, Commerce Lakes has got some issues. The, uh, Fairway Lakes Office Park has some real issues, and Town Lakes is kind of in the middle of those. The only way I know of doing it is you, you absorb them in, and you take them over, and you include it in the budget, or you go back to each of them, and this is where this thing is just going to go into orbit. If you tell each of the property owners, it's each one of those, that we'll do a special benefits tax.
Assessment.
Assessment. I thought they used the word taxing.
The old statue.
The old statue, okay. You ought to read that. Uh, and go back to them and say, here's our choices, we'll take it over, but you're going to have to pay through special benefits assessment, the cost to bring it up to speed. That would include streetlights, street signs, anything that we have to have that we see, just like we did at WCI, to bring them into, into the poll. Otherwise, I know what we're going to have, we're going to have a line at the door of, why did you do that, put that on us? Again, my difference is on these, they are public roads. I don't think anybody in Gateway can argue that these four are not public roads.
Turn them over to Lee County.
Uh, we tried that, Bill.
They will.
Lee County is, they may, they may be dumb, but they aren't stupid, they aren't going to take them over.
I don't think they.
And leave it alone.
conduct, be the one, prepare the title report first, make sure it's still listed, make sure there's nothing else funny out there. The quick claim deed gives you what they have, and then go through that process, and I can also use a research tool to try to find out current real addresses of those over there.
I just do, well, I research tool, that's all I can, but the issue is, we've got to get this resolved, because in my opinion, we are wrongly assessing Town Lake Office Park.
Why, what kind of shape are these roads in? Or is this something that as soon as we get a quick claim deed to us, people are going to be saying, you need to repay my road?
You had to bring that up?
Yes, I did.
Complicated. Westlake's and the others, the WCI did, as you know, they brought them up to speed, put in all the signs and this, that, and the other. The ones that we're talking about, Commerce Lakes has got some issues. The Fairway Lakes Office Park has some real issues, and Town Lakes is kind of in the middle of those. The only way I know of doing it is you absorb them in, and you take them over, and you include it in the budget, or you go back to each of them, and this is where this thing is just going to go into orbit. If you tell each of the property owners, it's each one of those, that we'll do a special benefits tax.
Assessment.
Assessment. I thought they used the word taxing.
The old session.
The old session, okay. You ought to read that. And go back to them and say, here's our choices, we'll take it over, but you're going to have to pay through special benefits assessment, the cost to bring it up to speed. That would include streetlights, street signs, anything that we have to have that we see, just like we did at WCI, to bring them into the fold. Otherwise, I know what we're going to have, we're going to have a line at the door of, why did you do that, put that on us? Again, my difference is on these, they are public roads. I don't think anybody in Gateway can argue that these four are not public roads.
Turn them over to Lee County.
We tried that, Bill. Lee County is, they may be dumb, but they aren't stupid, they aren't going to take them over.
I don't think they.
And leave it alone.
We tried it. We can't, that's like what the property owner was saying here, there, it's something's got to be done. Something's got to be done. We should have never allowed them to dissolve those POAs.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Okay, I do have a question, does this include the land that's across from Daniels Preserve that they want mowed?
Yes, that's the right of way of that road.
Okay, because that's like, I just, yes, to landscape, it's five thousand six hundred and seventy dollars that we're going to absorb to, to pay for that?
No, you just did, you absorbed it down at Westlake's.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that we were going to do that.
You'd be doing that on all these?
On all of them.
So my motion would be to authorize Tony to do whatever research is necessary to be able to send out the letter to those three officers to get them to agree to a quick claim deed to take over these roads.
How about bringing them up to?
They won't.
Standard.
They won't, they're dissolved, they will touch that with a ten foot pole. What we've got to do is to figure out, once we get them to consent to this, how do we go back? And to me, it's real simple, Mark, alls we do is we just say there's going to be a special benefits assessment, and we go do it.
Yeah, I haven't heard that suggestion come up.
It's the only way, well, she brought it up, so you open the door, just come in.
I know that they're issuing some of these roads.
It's the only way to do it. Those people that are in those parks should have been paying.
To maintain.
A capital reserve fee to maintain, not only that, but their lights and everything else. And they put us behind the eight ball for eight, nine years now, and nothing has been done in the balls in our park, and the deal is, is that it falls back to me, for the one time, on the owners of each and every one of the lots in each and every one of those POAs.
They have to be brought up to a standard, because it's not fair to ask the rest of the community to bring them up to a standard. Because I know, we take them over, that's the first thing they're going to say, hey, when are you going to pay my road?
Hopefully, they won't call code enforcement.
So that's my motion, to get this off dead center.
Could you please repeat it, just?
Authorize Tony to prepare, do the necessary research to verify that the ownership of those are vested in the ones we're asking for a quick claim deed, and to send a certified letter to the officers of record of those three POAs, asking them to sign off on a quick claim deed, transferring the assets at the right of way to the CDD for operation and maintenance. Now, I don't think, is there a need to handle the fixing of the road at this point in time? Who would have to give notice to the property owners and the businesses that we're doing the special benefits assessment? That'd be us. So it's a separate issue.
Yeah, we go through the assessment hearing process that we've done in the past, the initial resolutions, the project.
You bring up a good point, maybe what Tony puts in the letter is, is that to bring these roads and assets up to date, we anticipate issuing a special benefits assessment to the property owners, to the officers.
I would just, let's be cautious there, because if we move forward that course of action, it could result in them not doing anything. It could deter them.
Well, the officers are clean, they're not going to, they're, they have no reason not to sign this, they're, you can't harm them.
I just think before we accept a quick claim deed, that we need to have the mechanism in place to do that special assessment.
Well, we need to have an agreement here that that's the route we want to go, but I can tell you, I've been researching it, they're in any other route, other than the one that Bill had said, we do nothing. And I don't think doing nothing's fair.
No, I don't agree with that.
I'll second.
But I can go along with the special benefits assessment, and contact the people, get a letter out to, you've got ten owners in Town Lakes, you've got fifteen owners in Fairway Lakes, and God only knows how many in Commerce Drive, send them all out and indicate that there will be a benefits, our assessment of the cost to do it is a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars?
Let's get this done first.
That's how I do it.
Yeah, and again, we have to go through the same kind of assessment process we do for any project.
But that doesn't have to be in this letter.
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, the first part would be the title search, and then ascertain there's nothing else that's intervening in this period of time, and then also do the follow-up research to find out better addresses for these individuals, except Mr. Sardo, which he's in town.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would like to move an amendment to separate out the Daniels Preserve, which I'm willing to vote in favor of that one, but not on the other two. If you want to.
But they're all the same though, Bill, that's the problem.
They're not the same.
Are you talking about Commerce Lakes?
Other.
Commerce Lakes is the one that has the lot that needs mowing for Daniels Preserve?
I'd vote in favor of that one, but not the other two.
I almost think if you're going to, if you're going to, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, Bill, but if you're going to absorb one, I don't know how you would split them out and say, we're going to treat this one differently than the other.
I couldn't do that with a straight face to the people.
I don't know.
Why, you could, you could, you could take all of this expense internally with a straight face, why can't you leave things the way they are with a straight face?
That's how we got in this trouble, because we left them the way they are.
We're not in trouble at all, it's not only trouble is it, what you made.
All right, I just won't go there.
Anyway, I made a motion to amend, to amend out the ones, the Daniels Preserve folks, if there's a second on that one, that's fine, if not, that's okay too.
I don't see a second. I do not see a second on your motion. But Mrs. Flaherty did make a second on Mr. Tinkle's motion, so any further discussion on that? I like the idea of a special assessment, a special taxing assessment.
I hope you liked what it sold out.
Well, I know there will be people that won't be happy about it, but there'll be a lot more people that won't be happy if they have to pay to bring those roads up. So I will call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that's a four to one, Mr. Guy was not in favor. All right, let me find my agenda, we're moving right along. PBAC report, is anybody from PBAC still there? Oh, yes.
We're hanging in there.
The loyalists.
Bless you.
We heard there was beer afterwards.
There could be.
Just, any questions, I'll answer.
I read through it, and I didn't have any, but did anyone else have?
No.
Mr. Flaherty?
Are we waiting for the reconsideration issue? I know that we've.
I'm going to have discussions with the.
Okay.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
Still working, Brock.
Yeah.
It's a whip.
What are you talking about?
The golf cart reconsideration.
I had that on my list later.
Okay, there's still work.
Phil and I are going to talk tomorrow.
Yeah, we're going to talk tomorrow.
Okay, informational item, summary of general fund year-to-date revenues and expenditures.
It was just updated from this past move.
Thank you, these are nice. Well done.
Charts are cool.
Yep, easy then. So that brings us to the consent agenda, which is minutes?
Hold A and B.
Hold A and B, okay. All right, well, I'll wait for a motion on all of the items, let's discuss A.
No, it's generic, what the hell happened with our minutes? There was gaps in there, in fact, the minutes had blanks. Are we going to leave those blanks in there?
I think the recording failed.
But I mean, we've got, my copy had blanks in it. I don't know what to do with it. The only way I know is we go back to the recording, unless this is what failed, and we can't hear on the recording what happened, because it said that I made a motion, and I'm trying to figure out what the motion was based upon what the wording says that proceeds or that follows the motion, and the two didn't add up.
I got the.
You what?
I got the.
You had the same question?
No, because I have it in my notes. She makes notes, and she's got the word, the wording that's missing.
What I would suggest was, to the extent that Mr. Tinkley has those notes, divide them to Maryland.
And bring these back.
And Maryland will revise those and send it to myself.
I can do that. Other than that, I'd make the motion.
But you are saying that there was a recording failure? There shouldn't have been.
That's what I thought I read.
Yeah, that's what it said.
There may have been, I haven't looked at these. Let's confirm that it is a recording failure before we make a capital note of no vote.
That's good one.
I know on page eighty-one.
It's a page, but it may come in handy, then she's got all those.
Next time you look at her, you'll find out your motion, that's why we do it.
I'd be eating a little crow.
Going insurance.
On page eighty-one, where it said, the website you filed in, okay, that Mr. Tinkle made the motion, Doug Benz was the second, there was no second there for that motion?
Well, let's just go ahead, if you could take and get the stuff to Mike or somebody, let them contact, what's your name?
Well, let's make sure that we had a failure.
Make sure that we had a failure.
Then it's not a typo, or there's something with the document.
I agree with that. And there probably wasn't a failure, more than likely it's just you couldn't hear.
Probably here, yeah.
Some of the, I don't, I can't recall which means these were, but sometimes like when there's a lot of people there and they're talking.
Well, we had a lot of discussions going through this, and the motions.
How are we recording, how are we recording these? How are they? Just through the camera?
Correct.
And the camera's tied into the microphones, or not?
No, it's only.
Okay, we need a different solution.
Then I make a motion to approve C, D, E, and F.
Okay, a motion to approve consent agenda items C, D, E, and F.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that means we'll be bringing A and B back. Supervisor comments, I said I would start with Mr. Tinkle tonight.
Okay, fairwood, me too. We have an issue that we need to address, and it will be done tonight, it probably will take a couple of months. I prepared one of my famous white papers, and I've got it ready for distribution to the board, and it's in three parts. One, a description of all the repair, the replacement, and capital projects that have projected, that we have previously approved, with some additions that we haven't even thought about, that have come up, Kenny in his vows, that have come up in the interim. What I'd like to do is distribute to the board for their review prior to our next meeting, and include it on the agenda at the next meeting. We need to sit down and come up with a plan of how we're going to pay for and finance and prioritize these things. I've got listed here, it's two complete pages, and hold on to your hats, these numbers are, as best as I can tell, somewhere between nineteen and twenty-eight million dollars worth of work.
Is this?
And I think we do need to review.
This is everything in our district.
Thinking of the reserve.
Mike has seen it, Mike has seen it, it ranges down, I've got it broken down to where it describes work, then I've got a table that shows what it is, whether it's R and R or capital, and that makes a big difference, huge difference, because R and R is not.
What are these, are these just all utilities?
These are utilities and assessments, lake ponds, all that.
So, go ahead and distribute it in.
So I would like to have Mike distribute it to the deal, that everybody can look at it, and we'll be ready to go. This is nothing more than what's in our book.
Thank you very much.
In our board book, our budget book, plus things that we did in capital, for example, one of the things that we have talked about is doing the landscaping of our common areas. We dropped that because we can't, our landscape architect, it's in here, we may put it as a priority, lower than you know what. On the other hand, there's stuff in here, like the hydraulic study, that type of thing. We need to go through prioritize, and then try to figure out how we're going to finance, and what my recommendation is, and staff agreed with me, is that we need a workshop where we can bring Stephen Blum, and my recommendation would be Corbett Adelati, in, sit down with us, and we go through and work out a financial plan on how we're going to do all this work.
And so I got a couple of questions here. One is.
Did you have copies of all this for distribution to the board members?
I just handed out to them. This has been reviewed with staff?
Yes.
Okay, so you vetted this out with staff?
Yes.
All right, and so what this shows is basically an all-inclusive list of improvement items or maintenance.
No maintenance.
So this is all capital?
It's all, no, it's all repair and replacement and/or capital.
Okay.
Not maintenance.
But it's from anything, from 2018?
To 2023.
2023. So what I'd like to see, and part of this is the sequencing of it, so one, you have to make sure you can fund it, but also you have to sequence it based on either prioritization or if there's dependencies, things have to be done.
That's what we need to talk about.
So what I'd like to see.
Because a good example is if it's SRF approval, you've got to do a facility plan first. So you, to answer your question, we've got to sit down and lump this stuff, they've got to come up with a floor.
But the first thing, before we have this workshop or whatever, what I'd like to see, which I think Chris might be working on, but it's something I've asked him for, is out of here, I want to identify, what is, falls under approved 2018, which, when I say approved, I'm saying approved on the plan and budgeted.
Everything I have in here, Doug, comes off what we put in the budget.
But this is 20 to 2023.
When I did that, is if when we put in the budget, Pickland, it was four hundred thousand dollars for pounds that Kenny had, he put eighty, 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 so that's 2018 to 23, that's what I did.
But we only approved one year at a time, so.
Correct.
But that's the problem we've got, this stuff all ties together, we can't do that anymore.
So again, let me wrap up this one statement, then we can share. So even though this is, in some instances from a budgeting perspective, we have sequenced it out, I need to see what we have allotted for 2018, and what the sequencing of those items are. So we need to know what projects are hitting when, within the calendar year of 2018, 2019. That's the first priority, because one, we got to make sure we've got the right resources aligned, two, some of these things are sequenced according to dry season, wet season, you know, and there's some dependencies.
Now you know why we need the meeting.
So we need to secure 2018, and while we're doing that, then we will start to sequence 2019, 2020, 2023, and then that's where the funding comes in. So it's a, sometimes it's a flip between.
It's not a simple plan.
Right, it's not a simple plan, and I would also, one more thing, I'd also want to make sure that we, that we also come up with some type of coding, whether it's, I don't want to call it a prioritization, because I would think everything we have in the plan has a priority.
It has a priority.
But in the event that we're into next year, or hell, we're in this year, and something comes up, we need to be able to say, okay, we don't, it's not in the budget, and let's say we don't have additional funding, we need to push something existing. So we need to be able to figure out, two, if there's dependencies to multi-phases, what we could potentially push, and that might be a little bit further down the road.
That's why Stephen and Adelati in the meeting, I think, would be very beneficial.
And I think the first thing all the supervisors need to do is review this, because, you know, they really can't even make a comment on it, getting it just.
But we've got people asking, what is your plan for doing all this work you've got? We don't have a plan.
I know.
We don't have a plan.
Well, we do, it's in, it's budgeted.
Well, you think it is, and what I think it is, maybe two different things.
I understand. Mrs. Flaherty?
No, go ahead, my joke, okay.
I was going to go back real quick, because you were talking about these coming from the CIP and everything. I briefly looked at it, and I, a couple have popped out that aren't, for example, like the valve exercising, that's just news, and then I think also he had like Parks and Rec on there and things like that, some of that stuff may be more generalized, and what I like is how he has it, is what I would really focus on, and we could do it in a better format or whatever, but prioritize them, that way, obviously nineteen's approved, we can do that, but this is going to help here in six, eight months, when you go to do twenty, and that way you know what you're doing.
Because honestly, a master plan like this, and I think this is, we should have
a master plan, that there's items that we have that are identified, that Tetra Tech's leading, staff is leading, but Mike, I really see this as something that you would own, because it's tied to finance, and you always have, at least in my experience, when you're running these projects, you've got a project manager or business owner, but really it's your finance guy that's overseeing the PMO side of things, and that might be a little bit expanding your scope of your role, which we can have more conversation around that, but I would much rather have one point of contact, like yourself, the finance guy who owns the money, working and updating Chris and different areas of staff and working with Tetra Tech, because until we have a master plan, that we can say, here's the monthly version of our project plan, and it should, this, it should include both what you have and maintenance items, and we need a very holistic approach, so we know what we're doing, when we're doing it, and where we're behind it.
On the utility side, this greatly impacts what our rate consultant is bringing in, because they're bringing in basically a three-year plan, and some of these things, we just have found out about, from what Kenny has told us in the last couple of weeks, found out that we've got, we've got problems that are not even identified, haven't been identified here before.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Yes, I want us to look into some grants too, and I know some of this stuff could be covered with grants.
Well, I'm looking, that's one of the funding deals, I didn't put grants, I put impact fees.
Right, but I think grants, because I think ours definitely something.
Corbett should be able to tell us that.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good point.
Next item is rate study, what is our schedule and plan, we're having them deliver, we got the second draft of the rate study, I've looked at it, the only thing I've got is I want them to show me how they calculated ERCs, just to make sure they're right, because they changed them significantly.
Yes.
Which reduced the connection fee. But what is our plan to have that meeting?
We, I believe Chuck was in here Monday when I was out, but he should be in here tomorrow, and we should have a phone call with Daryl.
Can we have a discussion at the next meeting on scheduling? Then the next one is the audit company, where are we at with whatever we're doing with the audit company? Did Stephen Blume ever send out a revised schedule to those five firms?
I have not received one. I don't think Chris had it as well.
Will you follow up with Stephen?
Okay, next one, the office building, Tetra Tech design status. Where are we at on this office building?
Should have probably asked Tyler when I was here.
I put it under general, not under Tyler, I screwed up. Do you know where we're at on the office building? The instruction of the board to Chris was to get a contract with Tetra Tech to do a 2,500 square foot, how it would lay out here, and that type of stuff.
I can tell you, I know that Chris requested that from Tetra Tech, but I don't believe he's gotten anything, so.
You've seen it, you've seen that request?
Should that have been a task authorization?
Yeah, that's what we, Chris, we authorized Chris to get with Tetra Tech and get a task authorization. I haven't seen it.
And that's what I'm saying, nothing came, nothing has come from Tetra Tech.
Do they know about it?
Yes.
Who did you talk to?
Chris. I did not talk to Danny.
Let's make it simple, so I get out of the middle of it. You call Danny, because I think we're going to get a different story.
I will do that, but I don't think I will. But anyway, regardless.
Doesn't matter, let's get a task authorization, and then let's get moving.
Next one. We have been asked by residents, we haven't done a thing on it.